Lewisville City Council to order. We do have a quorum and it is Monday, June 6th, 6:30 PM. Only thing we have on workshop today is Item A, Discussion of Regular Agenda Items and Consent Agenda. So Council, we're going to go through those one at a time. Item one. Item three. Mr. Ferris, this is significant increase year over year for these types of chemicals. Is that right?
Yes, sir. We've seen a large increase in Keith Marley and our government services. Looking into this, you know, items such as your vanodris ammonia and your ferric sulfates and stuff that have really skyrocketed. You'll see that in the upcoming budget as a major increase. This is an annual bid award. This is something that's not that uncommon for other cities or utility districts that are facing the same dilemma. So I know Keith is talking to the region and potential with COG. I may mention at their opportunity board meeting about maybe doing some cooperative efforts to get a little bit better bang for the buck on the buying power. So we're looking into all options to maybe trying to reduce these costs down. Each city is slightly district different on how they treat water and wastewater plants. Some don't use chlorine, but they still use a lot of the same chemicals. Keith, would you agree with that?
Yes, sir. And like I said, there's an action step that will be presented in the upcoming budget that will be a significant increase year over year. And we have yet to see what DDU's rate increase will look like. And I imagine they will have a similar increase in there, so it's significant.
Now, opportunity was forecast in 10%, but again, last year, remember that the rates were closer to 14 or 15.
Right.
But I believe that ammonia was the biggest spike. Keith, is that correct?
Thank you. Item four.
This again suspends this rate request for 90 days for the city, sir, to reasonably negotiate a better, a better deal. And this will be done through Lloyd Gossel and with our representative, Thomas Perkada.
They usually do a great job. All right, that takes us through consent agenda. Item seven. I do have Mr. Chris McGinn here to have any conversation or questions that you have here in the workshop. I did ask that he do his formal presentation. I think everybody got the slide deck. That we do that out in the public forum, so I asked that we not go through and discuss all of that here, but if you do have any questions, he's here and prepared to answer.
Great PowerPoint.
I was going to make the same suggestion that given the amount of feedback that I've received, that we wait and have the discussion out there.
Superb. I talked with staff earlier today. They didn't have any issue with that, so I appreciate the flexibility on that one. Anything on seven that you'd like to cover now before we move on? Item eight.
Mayor, would you have amended most on that? I believe you do have that for the recommendation.
Two variances set forth, yep. And the, I'll call staff member requirement.
The amendment to that, yes, sir.
Yep, I've got that right here. I do.
I don't have it.
Yeah, I don't have any.
Okay. So provided that the request for service receive a response within a maximum of 15 minutes. I think that was your request.
Yeah.
And that's for the second variance.
That's the second variant.
Second for service.
Yeah, first one, the, yeah, two variances and then with a condition. So there's three.
Okay.
There's two variances and a condition.
The condition is tied to the service, but not the room size.
Yes.
And the applicant is aware of this and they're in favor of that.
Okay, I got it. I got it.
Yeah, I just, I have a, I just really have an issue with no one on site because it's just hard getting your contact, getting your responders to even pick up a telephone right now.
Let's let's respond. Do it now.
Liz, you have what you need there?
Yeah. I'll put some airbrush.
Good times. Okay. That's item eight. Item nine, Discussion and Consideration of the Appointment Process. This year's a little different just because we now have six council members and the mayor historically, and I'm just going to kind of give a broad overview because we do have a couple of newer folks. Historically, the mayor has been paired and we do three groups of two and divide up all the different boards and commissions. And each pair goes in, does interviews or whatever process they decide they want to do, avoids, of course, the quorum issue. This year, because we have an even number of council members, Julie and I talked a bit about the process, and I thought what made the most sense was that we pair off council members into, again, those three teams. And then I would just kind of float above and, again, avoid quorum. But if I had any input to give on any particular ones, I'd be happy to do that. I think that made the most sense. Julie's given me a breakout. Julie, I'm the only one that has this at the moment? Okay. So Julie gave me a breakout. What we wanted to do is kind of pick some boards and commissions that we thought made sense, that, you know, every one of us has kind of some interests that we tend to flag or certain boards or commissions that we tend to maybe lean a little more heavily towards. So what we were, this is our first, first pass at this, but what we came up with is that we would have Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Meredith and Councilman Troyer working on Animal Services, Library Board, Park Board, and TERS 4. We have Mayor Pro Tem Jones and Councilwoman Green on Old Town Design Review, Planning and Zoning, TERS 2, and CBOA. And then we have council members Cade and Kelly with the Arts Advisory, CDVG, TERS 1, TERS 3, and Lewisville 2025.
I guess I could work with him. He could be the real thing, man.
I figured, I figured we'd let the hazing commence really early.
Is that why you threw it to me?
I didn't for love to just now.
Right.
Train you right, son.
So that's going to be the recommendation. If somebody wants to make that as a motion, which is what we'll need to do, got that there.
So I do have a question about kind of the, the second part to this, to this item. Because it says to clear vacancy on, the vacancy on place two of B and B. When, when do we appoint these?
On June 20th.
So at the next meeting, so.
Yes, so you've got two weeks.
So, I mean, rather than, could we postpone the, this one today and?
Well, yeah, that's, the recommendation is to table that appointment into the June 20th meeting.
Okay. I missed that part.
So we're going to declare that there's a vacancy tonight, but we're going to table the appointment until the 20th.
Okay. I missed that part.
So that, yeah.
Excellent. And good idea.
Julie and I had discussed also about as the meeting was current, teams to kind of go over.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of moving parts on this, so some things to consider, and it's always a challenge. You know, I personally like to place people who have the board as their first choice on their first choice because there's a reason it's their first choice. But we also have some new dynamics to kind of play with here. In the supplemental material, I asked Julie to put together some information on demographics. Again, just to inform the conversation, I believe everybody here is always focused on we want to put the best resident in that role. We also want to make sure that, you know, we're hearing a lot of different voices. So we do have some demographic information in the packet available for you to look at. The other thing that I think is important and is new this year is that we've broken out what place that.
Districts.
Districts, that, that resident lives in. I think it's really important because boards and commissions ideally are a place where we see future leadership and where people get developed to, to take on the roles of city council or other leadership opportunities within the, within the city. When I looked at these numbers, over 50% of our boards and commissions actually come out of these two gentlemen's districts. So that's, that leaves the rest of the districts with, you know, anywhere from 6% to 13% of our boards and commissions come out of the remaining four districts. I think we need to make a concerted effort to try and spread that out. So, so having the data allows us to measure it and see what goes on. So that information is in the board packets, so you can take a look at that as well. But those, to me, I think are some key ideas that we need to, we need to just be aware of. I mean, you're going to get some applicants that are just, yeah, that this is them, this is their role, that's where they need to be. You're going to have others where it's kind of, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure, so these might be some other ancillary factors that you might put in. Each one of you guys can do however you want. I mean, I've, I've had council members, for those of you who don't, haven't done this before, I've had council members that just read the paper applications and that's it. Whichever's the best one on paper wins. I have others that do face-to-face interviews. I've had others that do phone calls. You know, it's, it's kind of up to you guys and what time you have available. But again, we're, we're kind of, this is an opportunity for that next generation of leadership, and I think if we're, the more intentional we are about it, I think the better we'll be for the city in the long haul. That's my two cents. What questions do you guys have?
I was just going to make a comment. I, I didn't look at all of them, but I did look at the planning and zoning, and there's, there is 96 pages worth of applications, so any little data point that we can have that can help kind of narrow those things down.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's, so we're in a great position to, you know, we've got a whole lot of people who have applied to serve on, on boards and commissions, which is awesome.
It was a time.
But it's hard to narrow it down. So this extra information is helpful. I do appreciate that.
And I'll send those out because right now they're PDF'd in your packets, but I'll send out the Excel spreadsheet so you can grab what you want and do whatever type of filter you want to do on those, so you can grab it. And I'll also email out after you all have made that recommendation tonight on the boards, who got assigned to what board, so it'll be easier.
One quick question on, so is place number one on planning and zoning not re-upping? Is that right?
No, he's not re-upping. They just had a baby. And so he's decided.
He's got it.
He did. I said they, I said they. They just had a baby, so he's, he's going to spend some time with the baby.
Okay.
He would like to be considered in the future, and I believe he was a very good board member. So.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Julia, miss anything?
I don't think so. Again, I'm happy to meet with any of you that want to sit down and meet to go over it. I mean, there's, there's some moving parts on this for board members that are turning off their boards that are want to be considered for other boards and some that may be better suited to another board, so I'm happy to sit down with interview teams.
And I think it's important to, to kind of keep Julie tied in. There are some folks that might be solid picks for multiple boards, so we got to kind of make sure that we don't get here and pick one person beyond three boards or.
Just like in years past, if you'll let either the mayor or I know who you want to appoint before that June 20th meeting, that way we can make sure we don't have any of those issues to appointing one person to three different boards, so.
Okay. I've got reports. We do have closed session tonight. Patrick, if you don't mind, I'm going to start with you for like items of community interest.
Awesome.
So you get, you get to take all the, all, everybody else's thunder tonight.
I'm curious about Lake Level, so.
Well, that's coming. Don't worry. We've already, we've already queued up the, the drama for that one, so.
I don't know why that's not on our recording thing when they enter the level. Today's light level is.
They called my number.
I love it. Can we, can we automate it?
We could.
Like when we go to the city website or the city GIS maps and the.
You can pull that number.
Yeah, just pull the number. There it is. There it is. I love it.
Well, that's true.
I'm not trying to steal Keith's thunder, man.
Keith, you're going to need a, you're going to need a second extension. Press one for.
We need to sell Keith dolls.
Yeah, press one for Lake Level.
They have that info.
All right, so if there's nothing else to discuss, we're going to go ahead and break until 7 o'clock where we will have our regular session. It is 7 o'clock, and I am calling this meeting of the Lewisville City Council to order. This is our regular session, and leading us off tonight, Councilmember Cade, I have you with the invocation.
Please join me in a moment of silence.
Please join me in the pledges to our flags. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Item C, Visitor Citizens Forum. Speakers must address their comments to the mayor rather than to individual council members or staff. Speakers should speak clearly and state their name and address prior to beginning their remarks. Speakers will be allowed five minutes for testimony. Speakers making personal, impertinent, profane, or slanderous remarks may be removed from the meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, clapping, and similar demonstrations will not be permitted. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. Action can only be taken at a future meeting. If you are here to discuss any of the other items that are on the agenda, you're, you're welcome to do that when that item comes up. City Secretary, do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor. I've not received any speaker cards, nor did we receive any ecomments.
Thank you. Item D, Consent Agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card or ecomment must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. City Secretary, do we have any requests?
No, sir. I've not received any speaker cards or ecomments.
Council, any requests? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Council, if you would please vote. Consent agenda passes five to nothing. Section E, Regular Hearings, Item Seven, Consideration of an Ordinance of the Lewisville City Council Amending Chapter Four, Article Six of the Lewisville City Code by deleting Sections 4-201 through 4-205 and inserting new text restating the Single Family Inspection Program and Providing Requirements for a Multi-Family Complex License and Inspection Program and Amending Section 4-151 by amending or adding certain definitions for clarity. Amending Chapter Five, Article Three, Sections 5-94.5. Appendix O by deleting language regarding multi-family complexes and Sections 5-92 and 5-93 to conform to the changes made to Appendix O. Amending the fee schedule by deleting the apartment complex per building fee and the multi-family unit inspection fee and adopting a multi-family complex license fee per dwelling unit and language regarding the waiver of said fee. Approval of a supplemental appropriation to the general fund in the amount of $29,000 for costs associated with the multi-family inspector position. Administrative comments are that the proposed updates to the ordinance will move the multi-family inspection program to Chapter Four of the Lewisville City Code, defining code enforcement as the responsible division to administer the multi-family inspection program. In addition, the request includes a proposal for a fee increase to support additional scope of inspections and funding of an additional staff member, allowing the program to better promote and protect the health and safety of Lewisville's multi-family tenants. The proposed supplemental appropriation in the amount of $29,000 will be used to add an additional multi-family inspector position in July. The changes will be effective 60 days after the publication of the city council meeting, allowing time to educate multi-family complexes about the program and fee. And it is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance and the supplement, supplementation appropriation is sent forth in the caption above. A way I would like to do this is if we could have Mr. Chris McGinn present, we have some additional information for council to make this decision, as well as multiple questions that have come up over the last couple of weeks. And then we will open the floor to any public comment if there is any at that time. So, Mr. McGinn, it is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Give me, Council, give me just a second, and I'll hold this presentation out. So I just wanted to take a few minutes this evening just to update council about the proposed ordinance change to our existing program, and also to address some of the concerns of the Greater Dallas Apartment Association and maybe resident concerns. I know there's some misinformation out there, and just want to make sure that we have all the information straight. So, so just a reminder of some of the history of the program. This program actually started in fire prevention back in 2004, and we were conducting annual inspections and charging a fee for, charging a fee for the program, starting, starting in 2004. The program later transitioned to building services. And a recent update in 2019, the council retreat discussion was to direct staff to add a dedicated multi-family inspector. We're going to move the, the program from building services to code enforcement, increase that multi-family fee to $13 to recover the cost of the program. And I'll talk a little bit more about why we made that decision to change it to 12 per dwelling unit, revise the current ordinance to improve the effectiveness, and reference the International Property Maintenance Code, which is what the proposed ordinance does this evening. And also look at setting our inspection goals to 5% of, of total units. Just to keep in mind that when we're talking about 5% of, in tot, of total units, that's not always increased inspections for, for all apartment complexes due to us moving from the one inspection per building to 5%. It just kind of depends on how that apartment complex is, is laid out. And so 44% of apartment complexes will actually see a decrease in inspections due to this new inspection criteria. So just talking a little bit about our current program and what this proposed program does. You know, currently, again, we're doing, we're doing annual inspections, and we're moving away from that, that fee, $50 per building and $75 per, per unit. And we were issuing a certificate of inspection. What this proposed ordinance does is it has certain requirements of, of the issuance of a multi-family license, and certain things will be looked at as part of the issuance of the license, verify current certificate of occupancy, also looking at annual fire protection systems, annual backflow device, looking at a lot of these annual requirements to make sure that those requirements are being met before the, before the issuance of the license. And then also the, the proposed fee of $12 per unit. In addition to that, there's also information there where we would waive the fee for any new apartment complex three years from the date of its certificate of occupancy. So at the bottom of this slide, just kind of looking at the current program and how we charge those fees, the example that we pulled here was basically one apartment unit with four dwellings. They were being charged $125 for, for their permit, which broke down to about $31 for a dwelling unit. And then the other example below, we were doing one exterior inspection, one interior inspection for the unit and, and charging that same fee, but in this case, this unit has 284 dwelling units, one building. And so the one inspection per building didn't really work out for some of the, some of the current complexes that we're seeing today, one building, multiple units. So with, with the proposed fee, you know, we'd be looking at, over there in the green, one building, four dwelling units, they would see a $48 fee, which would be a decrease to $12 per building unit on that instead of 31. And then also looking at the same scenario for the one building, 284 dwelling units, that fee would be $3,408. So definitely an increase there, but, but what we're going to be doing is additional inspections for that particular unit where we were previously just doing one inspection. Estimated cost for the expanded program. Currently, we have two multi-family inspectors and a chief code enforcement officer. The proposed program necessitates an additional inspector to continue to serve 51% of Lewisville's population that are currently living in apartments. Those projected revenues are based on a $12 fee and a waiver of fee for new complexes whose first final building inspection was completed less than three years ago. So looking at these three scenarios at the bottom of the slide, we have the current year. And so this is with our current fee and includes apartments in Castle Hills that was recently annexed, now Lewisville. And so we're looking at operating expenses of around $200,000, where the revenue would be around 700, $173,500. In the second scenario, we have expenses that include the additional proposed position and also those one-time costs, such as computer and a vehicle that would be involved should council decide to approve the, the ordinance, the proposed fee, and the supplemental appropriation. That revenue is also based on this, on this $12 per unit. The approximate expenses for one-year costs would be 333,000, 330,000, and, and the revenue is 295,000. So you can see that the expenses are more than, than the actual revenue. And in the second year, those expenses reflect the one-time cost going away and just the cost of three employees. So again, that, that method that we're currently doing doesn't scale well with some of our apartment complexes with the garden-style apartments. And so, you know, right now, the, you know, that proposed fee of $12 would bring in an estimated annual revenue of 295,000, a little bit more. You know, we currently have, and we continue to grow, 26,000 apartment units in Lewisville, and that represents 94 complexes in, in Lewisville now. The revenue is less than the city's cost to provide the expanded program. In addition to that, we are proposing the inspection goal of 5% per dwelling units, and also that annual program as it did before will still continue to handle resident concerns. So I wanted to take a little bit of time also to kind of review some of the concerns on the letter that was sent to city council members on June the 1st about the, the concerns that the Greater Dallas Apartment Association had concerning the program. And so I just wanted to take a look at some of those concerns and kind of discuss what some of those responses from, from our, from our side would, would be concerning the program. So one of the items that they discussed was that the ordinance places a cost burden on the apartment complexes and how they will pass those costs along to the residents, making properties less affordable, and requesting a total cap on fees. You know, changes were made from council retreat back when we were kind of looking at a $13 per, per dwelling unit fee to $12 per unit, and that really kind of fell in line with the cost of administering the, the program and the services that we were providing. Fees on average, what we did was we. Fees on average, what we did was we took the current fee that these apartments were paying and figured out how many units they had to kind of come up with an average unit cost per dwelling and subtracted that $12 from what they were paying. And what we found was an average increase per unit, per apartment complex of being $3.55. And that amount is per year. So, you know, if you're going to break down the average costs that an apartment renter, a resident could see, that works out to be about 30 cents per month. In addition to that, one of the concerns was that the ordinance is not fair for newly-built apartments. And so what we did was we looked at our ordinance to kind of figure out a way to find some consensus on this. And so what we did was we identified apartment complexes that were recently new, you know, newly constructed. And those locations won't necessarily, they'll still have to go through the application process for the license, but there won't be any fees charged for the first three years after the date of their certificate of occupancy. So we made some adjustments there and four complexes will experience no fees. And we also have a few more that are on the way. An additional item was that the ordinance will not provide apartment complexes with enough time to budget for the increased fees. Whenever we do the annual survey with the Apartment Association of Greater Dallas, we did put in what our current fees were, but also let them know that we were planning to have a fee increase or proposing a fee increase and what that was two years in advance. You know, recently, within the last four to five months, the Apartment Association of Greater Dallas has reached out and we've been discussing with them on ways that we can find some consensus in some of these areas. In this particular case, we added 60 days from the date of publication, should council approve this item, to charge, you know, that updated fee. And so that will give us some time to be proactive in reaching out to some of these complexes and letting them know about the process and this additional, this basically new process for the application. Ordinance, it was mentioned that the ordinance charges an above-average fee per unit. And, you know, we have to keep in mind that not all cities have a multifamily inspection program. Again, the city of Lewisville, we have 51% of our residents live in apartments. You know, that may not be the case in some of these other cities. So if you're looking at the fees of all the other cities and they don't charge a fee, you know, they may not have a program. And so that's something to keep in mind that we do have a large tenant population. And of those cities, of our survey cities, that do have a large population of apartment units have a program and their fee is in the area of, you know, $12 to $13 per unit. Anytime that we're charging a fee or coming up with a fee, those municipal fees, among other things, must bear a responsible relationship to the cost of the service that we're providing or regulating the behavior sought to be regulated. In other words, in this case, the fee should return only what it costs to run the program. Based on the Apartment Association's feedback, the fees were reduced to $13 to $12. This reduction means that the fees would not cover the full cost of the expanded program. It would cover most of the operational costs. There should, an additional concern was the fee break for properties that don't have violations from year to year. As stated earlier, you know, the fee was based on the cost of completing inspections and implementing this program. I think most importantly with this program was to kind of build that relationship with the property manager. You know, the city doesn't want to necessarily issue citations. We want to educate property management on what the requirements are and kind of bring them through the process. Currently, with the program, we're providing the 30-day notice prior to inspections and visit every apartment complex to meet with the manager to complete that pre-inspection. The pre-inspection ensures that the owners know what to expect upon the actual annual inspection. And, you know, this process requires quite a bit of staff time, but it's all in the name of compliance and education. If fees were based on prior year violations, there would be not really much of an incentive for the city to continue this pre-inspection process. An additional concern was that the ordinance does not focus on properties with code violations. Without proactive interior inspection program, the city could only cite some of these apartment violations from things that were visible from the public right of way. This program does more to ensure these properties appear neat from the street. Inspections will ensure that certain code requirements are being met such as fire sprinkler systems or making sure that flow tests are being done to private water lines. So if a fire truck comes out, that, you know, they know that line's going to work. Also, annual backflow testing, which protects our city water supply. Chimney, third-party inspections, smoke alarms, all those things that protect the health and safety of our residents. In addition to that, you know, we've seen in the past where some of these issues may exist and it's a pretty quick remedy to have them corrected without necessarily going through the notice or violation process, just educating the apartment manager on what needs to be done. Also, you know, exterior, looking at outside lights, looking at railing and stairs and making sure they're safe. Wiring that's exposed and additional property maintenance items. The ordinance, it was mentioned that the ordinance does not distinguish between professionally managed and non-professionally managed properties. And in my opinion, and also based on what we found, you know, both professionally and non-professionally managed properties, you know, we've found violations. You know, in what would be considered a professionally managed property, we found that a fire sprinkler system was not functioning, did not have water connected and that was three buildings that were there without the fire sprinkler system operating properly. So this can also be an opportunity to limit the liability of an apartment complex should some of these violations be found and remedied as we're kind of going through the education process. And, you know, I believe because of this program, you know, these items will be found as part of the issuance of the multifamily license process. In summary, you know, I believe that this program, you know, continues to promote the health of Lewisville residents, their safety. And with this proposed ordinance, you know, I think that this would continue to help Lewisville residents as we continue to grow.
Thank you, Mr. McGinn. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. McGinn before I open it up to public comment? Counselmember Kelly?
So I just want to make sure I understood some things correctly. So we've had 18 years with no fee increases from the original program, is that accurate?
That's correct.
And you said 20% give or take with that apartment complex that experienced a decrease in fees?
That's correct. 20% of complexes will see an actual decrease in fees and that average decrease is about, well, $348.89.
You've mentioned backflow devices, I want to focus on that real quick. Can you talk to us about why that's important, what happens if they fail? How does that protect the city water system?
So basically, water that would be not, let's say that there's water in a fire sprinkler system. It's not really potable anymore, it could be rusty. If there's a drop in city water pressure, that water could go back out into the city's water supply. So this annual backflow test prevents some of these things from happening and protects the city water supply. It's also an annual requirement of TCEQ.
Currently, we have two inspectors and one code enforcement for approximately 65,000 residents, 51% of our population, is that right?
Correct.
And then to reiterate, this is a break-even effort. This is not revenue generating, it's not that positive. It actually sounds like it's a negative to some degree. Now, one more, just for clarity, the average increase, if passed along to residents, which is no, there's no city ordinance that you must pass this along to residents.
Correct.
30 cents per month, per unit approximately. That compares to, I think my numbers are right, 18% average rent increase from apartment complexes last year?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counselmember Green?
Thank you. So I did get quite a bit of, as I'm sure we all did, quite a few emails on this topic. And so some of the questions that I had that you haven't answered already because you did answer most of the, addressed most of those issues. Just out of curiosity, one thing that was expressed to me as a concern by the residents was someone coming into their unit to do an inspection. So from what I'm hearing you say, we already do interior inspections as part of the current program, correct? So really, all we're talking about doing is just increasing the number, the number of units that get inspected?
In some cases, depending on the way that the apartment complex is, we may see a decrease inspection in inspections, for example.
So it's one per building? So if you had seven buildings, you were having seven inspections?
Yes.
Okay.
And now the inspection goal will be 5% of the total units, whatever those, however many units were in those seven buildings that will be inspected. We would never inspect a unit that we didn't have permission, not only from the tenant, but the property manager.
Okay, that's an excellent, that's an excellent point. I think that that addresses a lot of the concern. I also just had, so just in general, whenever an internal inspection needs to happen, how much time does that take? How much of an inconvenience is that to the person who lives there?
You know, I would say five to seven minutes, depending on kind of what they're finding and the size of the apartment. Also, keep in mind that this is one of those things that we're trying to work on our relationship with the property manager where we're discussing, hey, you know, we're going to be out there, you know, doing our annual inspection, you know, 30 days in advance. And so we're going to want to inspect X amount of units. So sometimes those units are vacant. But, yeah, so we're trying to have them think about, like, what units they would want inspected prior to our actual annual inspection.
Okay. I actually think that's it. That's all the questions I had, thank you.
Counselmember Jones?
Not really any questions. One thing, most of these apartment complexes maintain the right to go into the units anyway because they go in monthly to look at various things that are going on. My mom stays in an apartment here. But the big thing I want to talk about is just the messaging that went out to our residents that caused a great bit of what I would consider very significant concern where what was expressed through the Apartment Association to our residents via email was, you know, 400% increase, which was based on basically one owner who owned two apartments. And so that's the first thing that comes out to everyone. And the email that I got from the resident, you know, it says, "The proposed fee will lead to further increase in expenses required to operate the community, which is a significant driver of rent increases." Which, we've already established, that's not the case. So I just want to reiterate that, you know, I enjoy robust debate over how to do things properly as a city. What I do not like is manipulation of people through messaging to try to scare our residents. Some of the things we receive as second-class citizens of people who live in apartments, that's absolutely not true. We want to create a level playing field so that we make sure all of our apartment complexes are safe for everyone, period. I wish the association leader had come today because he's the person I want to talk to about this. You know, and I'm sure we'll have debates in the future about things, but I just want to say, you know, if you're going to message to people, message the truth. Don't send out this type of stuff that's just not true, that's manipulative, that's deceptive.
Fear mongering.
And so I just want, you know, I've been emailing, in fact, I didn't do anything at work today except email residents responding to their requests about this. So it was about 40 residents that I've been emailing back and forth, we're trying to explain to them what we're doing. I hope they're watching today, I hope some of you came in today to listen to what's going on so you can have the facts. And I'll continue to follow up with them this week. But, you know, that's my disappointment in this process is, you know, someone is trying to advocate for the apartment complexes, which is fine. I think that's a perfectly reasonable thing to do. But let's be honest when we have those conversations. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselmember Kate?
Well, I had a list of questions and stuff like that, but they've all been asked and I'm not just going to ask them just so I can hear my own voice. But I will like to reiterate with Counselwoman Jones said about the fear mongering tactics that took place that have literally scared some of these residents half to death. And they were based on insinuations about us and how we perceive them as second-class citizens. And they are also based on total misleading information. I'm not going to call, I'm going to give everybody a benefit of the doubt here. I'm not going to say lies, but I'm going to say misinformation. There were several of them that came across from citizens that talked about this being a new program. And this program has been in existence for 18 years. Not once has it had a fee increase for 18 years. I'd like to know where else you can go that has not had a fee increase for 18 years. And we're talking about 30 cents a month. So I want to bring up the fact that with these numbers, and Chris is there, you can ask them, you can ask them what their formula was. If your apartment rent goes up significantly because of this program, it's out of greed. It has nothing to do with this. And we don't need to be the fall guy for it. We're not here to punish anybody. But we're elected to maintain the health, safety and welfare of the citizens to make sure they're not treated like second-class citizens and to make sure that they never have to live in substandard buildings that we can't remedy real quick. That's not what Lewisville citizens need to have happen. So this is not punitive to our citizens in any way, shape or form. It is to actually put a layer of protection between you and a landlord that quite frankly may not care. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Counselmember Meredith?
I think everything, all my questions and all my comments have pretty much been said, but I will say that one question, one comment I've got, where does the difference, assuming we go through with this, where does the difference in costs come from, from the fees? Where does that difference come from?
As far as how did we figure out the average?
No, how do we pay for the difference? Where does that come from?
That's coming from the, you know, basically in our normal annual budget, we're budgeting that entire amount. And so that budget amount is set for that 300 and right now, around $200,000 to cover the and, right now, around two-hundred thousand to cover the cost of the program, and the revenues are in a separate account.
Okay.
It would come from the general fund.
General fund, general fund, yeah.
Other city services. So, it would be subsidized through general fund.
Okay, that's what I thought. So, thanks.
All right, there's no more questions from the dais. I do have a request to appear before the council, request for comment. Mr. McGinn, thank you so much for your time and insight. Mr. John Gillespie has requested to speak on this item. Mr. Gillespie, if you wouldn't mind coming up and stating your name and address for the record, please, sir?
Hi, my name is, my name is John Gillespie. We, I'm, I own, I own one multifamily property in Louisville. We own and manage, we have our own management company. We own and manage several properties throughout North Texas and even, even some in Tennessee. And we've been doing this for about thirty years. And, and so, I think you've addressed many of the questions or comments that I had regarding what the Apartment Association of Greater Dallas commented on. And I fully agree with Councilwoman Cade, your comment that the goal, to, the goal of the program should be to provide, make sure we are providing safe housing and in compliance with code, with all the various codes, et cetera. But, I think there are other ways to do it. And my request and recommendation is that the due diligence of this program change be expanded and that the city representatives meet with representative from the Apartment Association of Greater Dallas. They, they can give factual information regarding what other municipalities are doing, maybe provide options on how to achieve some of the goals. A couple of the comments that were just raised were fire control systems and backflow preventers and stuff. There are ways to achieve that by having us provide annual inspections from certified inspectors that we, you know, provide to the city. We do that in other municipalities. We want to do that because we want to maintain our properties. And it also gives the city the, the, an update that, yes, the backflow have been tested and they, they work. The fire systems have been tested and they work. And, and probably, these outside contractors who are licensed and approved by the state to do this do a more thorough job than the code inspection inspector does, because their, they, their reputation is on the line, their license is on the line. I'm not sure what the additional increase in fees is. I just found out about this last week, and I haven't put a pencil to it. But, any increase in fees is a burden to our residents. You know, they, my property is strictly blue-collar. We do have some retired people, we have some veterans, we work with the Veterans Administration, hire veterans. And if their fees go up, if the trash fee goes up one or two dollars a month, that impacts them. If this goes up fifty cents a month or a dollar a month, it impacts them. If their electric bill goes up, which all of our electric bills are going to be going up, it impacts them. So, I think that should be considered. And your comment on, on the inspections, the intrusion into their units is a valid concern. We, we are in the units a lot. We change their air-conditioning filters, we provide, you know, work on maintenance calls. And if we see an issue, we identify it, and we do the best we can to address it. Our lenders perform an annual inspection. And most lenders now do it every other year if there is a satisfactory inspection on year one. And many other municipalities are doing the same thing to reduce the administrative burden on our property staff and to reduce the, the number of times outsiders are in somebody's apartment. So, I, I think there's several areas that could be improved if the due diligence was in, was done a little bit more thoroughly and in cooperation with the Apartment Association, and if there was an open mind on what, what the objective is, what the program is trying to achieve, which is, you know, safe housing. So, so, do you have any questions for me?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, sir. We do appreciate the input. I will, I will let you know that staff did meet with the Apartment Association, and I'm sure there's always going to be ways that we can, we can tweak and modify this rolling forward. So, we really do appreciate the, the input. Of course, that's an assumption on where the vote comes out tonight, but appreciate the input. City Secretary, do we have any other comments?
No, sir, we do not.
Counsel? If there are no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Move to approve the ordinance and the supplemental appropriation as set forth in the caption.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All right. Councilmember Kelly? City Attorney?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending Chapter Four, Article Six of the Louisville City Code by deleting Sections Four dash two-zero-one through Four dash two-zero-five and inserting new text restating the single-family inspection program and providing requirements for a multifamily complex license and inspection program and amending Section Four dash one-five-one by amending or adding certain definitions for clarity. Amending Chapter Five, Article Three, Section Five dash nine-four-point-five, Appendix O by deleting language regarding multifamily complexes and Sections Five dash nine-two and Five dash nine-three to conform to the changes made to Appendix O. Amending the fee schedule by deleting the apartment complex per-building fee and the multifamily unit inspection fee and adopting a multifamily complex license fee per dwelling unit and language regarding the waiver of said fee, providing repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Mr. McGinn, I'm going to make a point of executive privilege and ask a quick question. The publication date, when would that be?
I'd have to go to City Secretary.
I can answer that. It'll be this Friday, and so, then it'll be effective ten days after that. So, June twentieth would be the effective date.
So, then it goes sixty days after that, so July, August?
My apologies, yes.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. I do have a couple of quick comments. Our number-one goal here is health and safety, period. It's what we do. If I had to cut this city to the bone, those would be the last things left, health and safety. To imply that we're doing something other than that and that we're creating a group of second-class citizens, unacceptable. If we didn't care, you wouldn't have this. There are too many stories I've seen from my police and fire department where people have said, "I would not report because I will lose my housing." We can't have that. It's, and it's happened, and it's happened a lot. And we've had several groups with our immigrant groups that come into Louisville that we've had over the last few years. They don't speak English, they've, they've come, you know, walked three thousand miles. Government is the enemy. And they're in a position where housing was untenable. This solves that to some great degree. I don't think it's going to be perfect. I think there's some great opportunities that were presented that we may be able to nip around the edges and make some changes to create less burden for everybody, because I don't think anybody up here is interested in government burden. That, that's not what we do these things for. So, for anybody that feels like they're being treated like a second-class citizen in this deal, come talk to me, because you won't be. We'll take care of you. That's what we do here in Louisville. And we, we appreciate those property owners that are out there doing the right things. We also know that there are, there are folks out there that don't. I've seen too many stories. So, with that, I want to thank staff for all the effort. I do want to thank the Apartment Association for the information that they gave us at the beginning of this conversation. They did give us some stuff that absolutely we were able to use to move in the guardrails a bit more and make it a better program. But, again, everything's a work in progress, and we're not going to let perfect be the enemy of the good. So, thank you for that. Item eight, consideration of two variances to the Louisville City Code, Section Nine-point-five dash one-eighty-two, hotel motel extended stay facilities related to minimum guest-room size and onsite staffing for a proposed hotel located at one-oh-two West Main Street as requested by Richard Helpe Schmider, my apologies, and Fenya Hospitality, the applicant. The applicant plans to open an eight-room boutique-style hotel at one-oh-two West Main Street within the existing building. The following two variances are requested: A, to allow a minimum guest-room size of two-hundred square feet in lieu of the required four-hundred square feet, and B, to allow an on-call staff member in lieu of an onsite staff member available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It's recommended that the city council approve the two variances as set forth in the caption above. I do have Mr. Richard Ludke available. Do questions? There's no presentation to speak of. Counsel? I'll entertain a motion.
Well, Mayor, I'd like to say, I love this concept. I really do. I really like this concept. My only concern was not having anyone on site. But, I think that I'm going to make this motion right here, and it's going to take care of that. That the city council approve the two variances as set forth in the caption above, with a condition on the variance which allow an on-call staff member clarifying that this variance shall be allowed only if all requests for service receive a response time within a maximum of fifteen minutes. And I ask that of y'all because we have had issues with response times for our fire and police. So, we need to set something.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Councilmember Green? Counsel, if you would please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. I want to thank Fenya Hospitality. You guys have a great concept here. This is pretty clean and easy to work with, and look forward to booking a night here in Old Town. I think that's going to be awesome. Item nine, discussion and consideration of appointment process to various city boards, commissions, committees. Declare a vacancy exists on the Planning and Zoning Commission in Place Number Two and consideration of an appointment to Place Number Two on the P&amp;Z. On June thirtieth, various terms of office on the city's boards, commissions, and committees will be expiring. Those positions have been identified and current appointees notified. The Board, Commission, Committee Appointment Process Electronic Notebook has been created for city councils review. Data sheets for members requesting reappointment and all new applicants have been included in the electronic book. City council will need to identify interview teams and determine which team will be interviewed with which board, commission, or committee. Additionally, due to the election of Sheila Taylor to the Louisville Independent School District Board of Directors, yay, sorry, that was editorializing, she will no longer be able to serve on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The council will need to declare a vacancy and consider an appointment to fill this position. Staff recommends that this position be filled during the board and commission's appointment process. So, it's recommended that the city council proceed with, one, the appointment process to the various city boards, commissions, committees, identify interview teams, interview dates, and determine which team will interview which board, commission, or committee, and, two, declare a vacancy in Place Number Two on the Planning and Zoning and table the appointment until the June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting. During workshop, we created some teams. I think I handed...
I got it.
There we go. Councilmember Green's got my back here. So, I will entertain a motion.
Okay, well, if, if it's okay, I'd like to do the, the motions backwards and do Number Two first, since it's a little shorter. So, I move that we declare a vacancy in Place Number Two on the Planning and Zoning Commission and table the appointment until the June twentieth, twenty-twenty-two city council meeting. And I'd also like to move that we set the following teams and boards, Board, Commission, Committee interview assignments as follows. We have Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Meredith and Councilwoman Troyer handling the Animal Services Advisory Committee, Library Board, Park Board, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Four, Mayor Pro Tem Jones and Councilwoman Green having the Old Town Design Review Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two, Zoning Board of Adjustment, and Councilwoman Cade and Councilwoman Kelly have the Arts Advisory Board Committee, the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Three, and the Louisville Twenty-Twenty-Five Advisory Committee.
I second the motion, and I second the yay for Sheila.
I have a motion, a second, and a yay. Counsel, if you please vote. Motion passes five to nothing. Thank you, counsel. Item F, reports. Reports about items of community interest regarding which no action will be taken. And we're going to start over with our city secretary. Richard?
Nothing, Mayor. No reports, sir.
Super.
Nothing to report, Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I just want to say that the city of Louisville has been keeping an eye on the lake level for many, many years. And today, it's at five-twenty-four-point-one-six, which is just a little over two feet above the normal pool level.
There we go. Thank you, sir. And with that, Mr. Kelly, would you mind kicking us off for counsel reports?
Just a couple of things, Mayor. So, one, near and dear to my heart, hazardous waste. If at the longest time in Castle Hills, it took an act of Congress and council to actually get hazardous waste picked up. So, I'm excited Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays by appointments. You go to the website, you can find out how to set your appointments. That's, that's anybody in Castle's listening, now's the time to go ahead and get that stuff out of your garage. And then also, unrelated entirely, summer movie matinees, Family Fridays, two PM, six-ten, we have Encanto, and six-seventeen, we have Rea and The Last Dragon. Excited about that.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Green?
I was just going to mention that tomorrow, we are officially kicking off our Sounds of Louisville Concert Series every Tuesday night in the summer. And we are kicking that off with Jessica McBay, who was labeled as a country music singer, but it sounds like she can cross genres. So, it should be a good show. I don't know what the weather's going to do, but, you know, well, it starts at seven PM, so maybe the heat won't last quite as long. And, yeah, I think that's, I think that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Jones?
Okay, I want to thank Councilmember Meredith. Let me steal a couple of events that are going to be at the Louisville Grand. We'll be celebrating Juneteenth, starting this Friday, actually, at the Louisville Grand. The Orchestra of the New Spain will perform a special concert featuring black composers and musicals. That'll, the seats are five dollars for students and twenty for adults. Wednesday, June fifteenth, at seven PM at Website Baptist, Dr. Atchison will host a African-American community leaders for a Juneteenth event where they're explaining the history of Juneteenth. On Thursday, June sixteenth, Louisville Grand Theater, again, there'll be Dr. Norman Cox, who will talk about Juneteenth one-on-one, popular myths and forgotten facts. After the presentation, there'll be a screening of Miss Juneteenth. That, that is free for the public, but you do need to go online to register. June seventeenth, we'll have Don Diego out at, out at Wayne Ferguson, so you can come out and enjoy some jazz. For me, it was like, Don Diego was a big, famous jazz guy here. So, you know, once I got to see him, I was really a full, a full Dallasite, I guess. Now, I'm doing this favor for my, my, my city of Denton Friends and city of Little Elm, so I expect payment in full. On Saturday, June eighteenth, Denton will have the Juneteenth Market at Denton Square. And Little Elm, for you healthy folks out there that would like to run and run five Ks, they'll have a Little Elm Juneteenth Freedom Run at Little Elm Park. So, you can go to my Facebook page and get all that information you need, and go, go out there and get active and learn about Juneteenth. That's all I have, Mayor.
Councilmember Cade?
I don't really have anything to report, other than Animal Services is still waiving their adoption fees for dogs over twenty pounds and cats, not cats over twenty pounds, just cats in general.
Commas are important.
Exactly. And I just would like to take this time just to extend to Chief Dever and the rest of the city of Louisville family that Officer Mickey Hudgens was laid to rest today, and our hearts and prayers are with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Meredith?
Yes, Mayor, I've got some library and Louisville Grand Theater activities. Switch Gaming FTW for teens age thirteen to eighteen, Tuesday, June seventh, one to three, no registration required, Bennett Program Room. Friday, family movie matinee for families with children of all ages, Friday, June tenth, two to four PM. Ticket is required, and that also is at the Bennett Program Room. And some Louisville Grand Theater activities, some have already been mentioned. June fourteenth will be the I Tina Band Opening Act Vigil. Louisville Talks City Speak, that's been mentioned. Dad Jokes, an evening of stand-up, family-friendly show is at June eighteenth at four o'clock. Dad Jokes, an evening stand-up, The Other Version is at eight PM. Acoustic Jam Sessions on Fridays. Art pop, pop up in the Plaza, June eleventh. Yoga in the Plaza on Wednesdays. Pilates on Thursdays, and Tai Chi on Saturdays. Exhibitions Inspired by the Master, Visual Art League of Louisville, May seventh through June eighteenth. Nancy Sterling, winner of the two thousand twenty-one Fresh Ideas Show presented by Visual Visual Art League, June eleventh through July ninth, and Shifting Perspectives, presented by Visual Art League, June eleventh to July ninth.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Ferris?
Yes, Mayor, counsel, just want to do, let everybody know that our department and development teams are working very diligently, very hard on the Louisville Public Safety Complex project. We anticipate having a presentation for counsel as an update at the next meeting on June twentieth, so a lot of good information, subject to change, but we are scheduled to have another presentation at the next council meeting.
All right. With that, we are going to move into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section five five one point oh seven two, Real Estate Property Acquisition and Section five five one point oh eight seven, Economic Development Deliberation Regarding As there is no additional action to be taken on tonight's agenda, we are hereby adjourned at eight oh seven P M.